Thank you, everybody. I apologize for the technical difficulties. You know, I never can find a 12-year-old when I need one, so I had to settle for my council president. But thank you for being here. I'm Melvin Edwards, Chairman of the Planning Economic Development Committee. Looking at the list, I believe that I am, as the Chair, established quorum by presence of the President of the Council, Jesse Letterman. And I don't see any of the other voting members, Maria, Council Perez, or Council Curran have, are in attendance as right this moment. But we're 11:09, and for the sake of everybody's time, I'd like to get started as quickly as possible. If people could just run down the list and just kind of give you, state your name and your title, our relationship to this issue, and we'll get started and by turning it over to the appropriate entity as soon as possible. So, Charles Irving, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, Chuck Irving. I'm with Davenport Property, with the partnership group that is looking to develop the project.
Juan Prieto, also with Davenport, and we're the developers of 169 Maple.
Hi, I'm Joy. I work with Chuck and Juan, and we're working on 169 Maple Street.
I'm Anna Marie Kirsten. I'm Director of the EDIP Program. I work for the Mass Office of Business Development and can answer any questions that are EDIP-related.
I'm Matthew Fontaine, member of the Springfield Board of Assessors, also a member of the TIF Committee internally.
Brian Connors, City of Springfield Economic Development Office.
I'm Chief Development Officer.
And we have recovered everybody? Aaron Saunders, Council Letterman. Matt Fontaine.
I'm Jesse Letterman. I'm the President of the Springfield City Council.
Can I speak to Diane? I'm also with the City of Springfield, calling her about an application.
So, councilors, the TIF Committee is put forward to the Economic Development Subcommittee, two applications for consideration to advance. Brian, why don't you go through the two projects and then we can have the applicants address the committee and then get into questions that the councilors might have?
Great. Thanks, Tim. I've got just a couple of slides on each one, so I'll try to move along.
So, I was just following this picture. I kind of understood what the business is. So, when we spoke, I guess it's me. It just sounded like you guys were selling electric bikes.
Everybody got that?
In the description?
We are.
Alright.
Is there another conversation going on in the background with somebody's mics open?
Yeah, I'm sorry. There's a phone call happening behind me. We're in a shared office here. So, I'll try to speak up. So, we're looking at two projects today. One is a TIF project. I'm sorry, one is a TIF project and one is an HDIP project. We'll look at the HDIP, which is a market rate housing project for 169 Maple Street, which I think many of you are familiar with from multiple development proposals over the years. HDIP is a market rate tax incentive that provides a tax, a local tax incentive, as well as a state tax credit for creating new market rate housing. This project is being proposed by Davenport Advisors, who you've met, at 169 Maple Street, built in 1920. It'll create 11 units of housing. These are large units. These are an average of 2,200 square feet each. And in terms of history of ownership, the city took this property 10 years ago in a tax foreclosure, put it out to RFP several times. It's been vacant since then. I had one developer that tried to redevelop it and wasn't able to. The city reclaimed possession when that project didn't move forward and has since put out another RFP to select Davenport. That happened last summer. Since that time, Davenport's been assembling its financing. The proposed investment is $3.4 million, including hard and soft costs. Excuse me, I think it covered a lot of these points in terms of the need, you know, the need is kind of exemplified by the building being vacant for the last 10 years and one development not moving forward, but also it's exacerbated since COVID with the higher cost of increase in supplies. And then the interest rate increases further made this pro forma more challenging. As mentioned, the city foreclosed on the building 10 years ago. Parking for the building is a city-owned property that was put forth as part of the RFP on Central Street, just across the intersection. There'll be a map at the end of this that kind of shows you where that is. The actual HDIP agreement that is proposed in this is the identical to the last one that the city approved, which was Overland Lofts. The exemption percentage is in front of you there. So, if there's any questions on that, let us know. Assessor has reviewed this as well, and Mr. Fontaine's on the call as well. And that's just where the property is. I think most people on the call are familiar. This is right across the street from the Maple Street. So, I'm going to run through the other project as well, and then we can open it up for questions for either project. The second project we're talking about today is at 5159 Taylor Street. This is a TIF. This is a commercial tax incentive. You know, important to know about incentives like these are the tax increment is only applied to the new growth that's caused by the project. So, it doesn't implicate existing taxes. Those continue to get paid. We're only talking about the new growth created by the new investment. The applicant is Snapland 59 LLC, which is a partnership of Snap Chef and Loophole Brewing. We're both on the call today. The building is 5159 Taylor Street, built in 1880. Some of the call may remember it as the Alumni Club. Most recently, it was City Church. It's a 14,000-square-foot building. Proposed jobs, 30 full-time, 20 part-time. And both of these projects are proposing to use local labor as part of the redevelopment. The investment on this is 1.925 million. That's over $1 million in improvements and acquisition of 875. Snap Chef, I think, councilors, you may already know Snap Chef came into the city prior to COVID, had a location on Worthington Street for years. They do career training in the culinary field, so they get people into entry-level positions in culinary and kitchen work. And they partnered with Loophole Brewing, so this will establish their headquarters for Snap Chef for the training operation on the top floor. And then Loophole Brewing will be on the first floor with a brewery, taproom, outdoor dining in the rear, and then a second-floor event space for live music and other events. The need here is just a significant investment to return this into an active use for restaurant and training headquarters. And the TIF program, and I think Anna Marie can speak a little bit to it, is built so people can make a significant investment and then not get hit with a big new tax bill in the first year. It lets them get themselves on their feet, so they can have a better chance to survive. Loophole is, and Snap Chef is seeking a five-year agreement. Again, this is the minimum agreement you can have for TIF is five years. It's identical to the last approved TIF, which was Duck Pack. As is the exemption percentage. It's a pretty standard TIF. You can see a couple of renderings. I know they've got some great ideas that they can certainly talk about. And you can see the view from their second floor right there of downtown and Durier Way. They plan to partner with the bid to activate Durier Way every week with a beer garden. And this is the location. You can see it's at Taylor and Keener Street and a Butts, Durier Way, right in our dining district. So, I believe this property was tax exempt, but the assessor can correct me if I'm wrong. So, these would be two properties that are not, have not been on the tax rolls for a while. That would again become fully taxed thanks to these projects.
Before we jump into questions, I'd like to have the applicants add anything additional that they would want the councilors to hear, starting with the Davenport team.
No, we're excited about this project. You know, our goal since we partnered on developing the casino has been to see downtown come back together. So, our project here is based on data points that we've gathered from Overland Lofts. Overland Lofts is a market rate property that we developed and opened about three years ago. Also downtown, that's about 60 units. And so, we feel comfortable with this project because of our experience with Overland Lofts. We think with this economic model, it should work out pretty well.
Jeff and Todd, I know there's a message in here that you lost sound. Can you hear?
We're back online, Brian. Paul Smokowski with Snap Chef and Loophole.
Hi, everybody.
Everybody, I know Jeff. And then Aaron Saunders is also on the call. He's going to take it away.
Good afternoon, everyone, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to present here and Brian and Tim and the Bears team for all of your work getting us to this point. We're incredibly excited to be coming to Springfield and specifically in this location. As Brian had mentioned, City Church, we believe that this property was exempt from any tax and it had been vacant since the onset of COVID. So, not only bringing it back to the tax rules for the city, bringing some new life to the property and importantly, expanding the entertainment district, another block closer to Union Station. Growing that connectivity with the northern part of downtown. As was mentioned, this collaboration between Snap Chef Loophole allows us to utilize the entirety of the building seven days a week and provides not only terrific training opportunities for city residents, but also trains a desperately needed workforce in the culinary field and back of the house. For loophole's part, Springfield gaining another craft brewery. I think, you know, I don't want to speak for any other brewery in the city, but I think it's seen as a net positive. It continues to put Springfield further on the map as a destination for craft beer, along with White Lion, Page Street, and certainly Smith's Billiards has an incredible reputation for one of the best craft beer lists. One of the things that we at Snap Chef, Loophole, are very excited about is our aspiring brewer program. And this is meant to democratize the brewing field a bit. As you know, you could see in the planned investment, brewing is an incredibly capital-intensive process. It requires all of the investment on the front end before you have any idea whether your product is going to be successful in the market. You know, loopholes had the opportunity to launch our brand for a couple of years, so we're a bit more confident now. But with regard to the aspiring brewer concept, this is going to allow folks to test out their craft brew ideas, dreams, without having to take on the risk, financial or otherwise, of before working out the kinks. Not only is this going to provide some equity in terms of people who may not have the financial resources to jump in with both feet, but we also hope to make a dent in the craft beer world, looking like the neighborhood that we're going to be occupying downtown Springfield and really opening it up to communities that aren't as represented as I believe they ought to be in the craft beer world. And that aspiring brewer program being an important facet of the brew pub and taproom concept. We're incredibly grateful to the city for the recent ARPA Award for outdoor dining, tying into the existing outdoor dining on Durier Way and Jackalope and at Dewey's. It's going to be a great, great scene down there. We can't wait to get going. This application is essential to the deal penciling and being able to move forward as expeditiously as we like. And we appreciate any consideration the council can give to the application.
Councilors, I believe that concludes our presentation to you. Are there any questions that you folks have, coming back to the applicants and/or staff?
I have one, but I'm going to start with Council Letterman.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. First, Brian or Matt, could you could you put in, could you put the percentages that you had up previously into monetary terms?
Council Letterman, I think that's something that we can put together for you. You know, and get you a chart on something like that.
Sure. Just, you know, the projected financial benefit in a dollar amount would be helpful, I think, for the broader council to understand as well. And let me say, before I go further, you know, I'm excited about both of these projects. I think that certainly the council's already signaled support for the Maple Street redevelopment through permitting and some CPA awards that have already been made. And certainly, the loophole concept has been much anticipated, highly anticipated. I think activating the backend now of Durier Way and the synergy with Dewey's and Jackalope is, you know, definitely a match. That is exactly what we need downtown. So, let me start by saying that. You know, for both the developers and for Brian, I noticed on both charts, there was a comment made on that both projects would be using quote-unquote "local labor." Can you expand upon the labor plans as far as it pertains to construction on both projects?
I can answer for Davenport. One of the partners in the deal is a local Springfield-based disabled veteran-owned construction company, Foxtrot. And they will be doing the construction for the building and using local subs.
What about our architect?
And our architect is local as well. Jablonski Associates. For loophole.
Yeah, for loophole, we're kind of just getting started here. We are researching and getting quotes from a bunch of different vendors right now. Also working with Rayford. He has some local construction guys that we're talking to. We're using Dewey's, I was Dewey, the plumber you're from there?
Dwyer.
Dwyer, sorry. So, we're using Dwyer's, they're local, local electricians. Right now, again, we're just kind of getting underway here. So, you know, we'll have more to report probably in a couple of weeks.
And, you know, a couple of years ago, the council passed a series of legislation aimed both at HDIPs and TIFs to essentially require that the contracts match our responsible employer ordinance, which covers public construction, but it essentially copies the language of the responsible employer ordinance and requires that that language be included in the HDIP and TIF contracts the hours worked under each project to match the REO. So, that would be, you know, 35% local residents and a number of other requirements. So, for the team, as the contracts are being developed, is that language that is anticipated to be included prior to the agreements being inked and forwarded to the council?
Yeah, our TIF agreements reflect back to city and state ordinances that allow us to be able to do these things.
Okay, so when the ordinance, when the ordinance is filed with the council, it'll have the explicit goals of the REO language included in it?
I think it'll have the referral code to the TIF policy.
Okay, that's great. That's great to hear. Certainly, as I said, I think the council, you know, has expressed excitement already about Maple Street project and certainly in the community and amongst colleagues, the loophole concept that you all have been working on for some time is one that we welcome. Whenever we're negotiating, you know, these types of agreements, you know, I always want to make sure that as we negotiate a benefit for the developer, we're also ensuring that the overall project is benefiting the community, both in terms of the economic spin-off, which is 100%, I think, present in both projects here, but also in the construction industry. And I think the council, especially Council Edward, who's Chair of the REO now for over 10 years, has really been diligent in trying to, you know, incorporate consistent policy language as we move along. So, it was important to me just to make sure that we do have, you know, that clear upfront. But looking at what you're bringing forward, I think that the economic benefit is undeniable. And so, certainly, looking forward to seeing the continued details of monetary figures from you, Matt, but certainly to both of the developers. Thanks for coming forward and presenting. Those are my questions for today. I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Well, I just, I want to piggyback on a little bit on what Council Letterman just said in regards to the hiring goals as related to the REO. This is private, but it was written in. And I just wanted to make sure the developers are aware that the Springfield residents or expectation for whoever the contractors are, it's the general contractor who's responsible for fulfilling these numbers. And through the hiring of the subs, it is 35% for residents, but it's also minorities are 20%, women at 6.9%, veterans 5%. And that does not mean that they, I know it was mentioned that the owner, the general contractor is a disabled vet. These numbers do not apply to the contractor himself or the general contractor as the owner. This is the workforce. So, the workforce should be at least 5%. And also minorities, women, veterans, and I think that covers it. But I just wanted to make sure they were clear on the numbers. And Brian, if you could make sure that they, as it comes back to the council, the whole, that those numbers are reflected somehow in that presentation, certainly would be helpful. I too am very supportive of both of these projects. And as Davenport probably can remember that when they came before the city council, the vote was not unanimous for their project. And wow, you know, it's been already echoed by my, you know, by Council Letterman and now by myself as to our general support of this. You can anticipate that this is going to be a big question, is the, you know, these hiring numbers. And these numbers are intended to ensure people locally are involved in the construction. Both of these projects coming online, especially the Snap Chef and the Loophole Brewery, you know, is a benefit economically because it's going to generate opportunities for residents to be employed once construction is done and these operations are up and running. So, just be conscious of that before and be prepared, because that will be one of the things that I'm sure some of my colleagues are going to question. The other thing that I had, I wanted to just ask, related to Snap Chef Chef and loophole, when they, and this is for Brian Moore, so because it applies only to new growth and this previous project or parcel was as a church non-taxable, so it applies to new growth, what would the present taxable base be as it stands now or pre-construction?
Yeah, so what happens with that, and I'll certainly give Matt the opportunity as well to correct me if I misstep. But what happens with that basically is this TIF and as well as the HDIP, the exemption won't actually start until July 1st of next year. So, the baseline value is set now. They've, they're moving forward with the acquisition, I'm sorry, I already have. So, there's going to be a baseline value before they do the improvements. And then the improvements are then factored in as of the date the exemption, the exemption program begins, which is July 1st of next year.
Okay, but I just, I just, my.
No, it's a, it's a good question, because if it was non-taxable and there was, you know, if the value was significantly lower than the exemption percentage, it's going to have a higher impact. But I don't know, Matt, did you have anything more on that?
Thank you, Council Edward. So, when the, when the property was sold, it triggered a taxable event. The city will bill from that day till the end of the fiscal year a prorated amount based on the transaction consideration, the number on the deed. We will also, then in fiscal '24, will count that all as new growth, because anytime something goes from exempt to taxable, the city can consider it new growth and capture the additional levy associated. As far as the improvements, you know, we'll wait to see how the construction goes along. Every year, we look at June 30th and we'll determine what's the value of the property based on the progress as of June 30th. So, what we'll take, and this is to Council Letterman, question two, is us to determine what's the market value once it's completed. And then the exemption will only apply to the base value, you know, less that market value.
We've also been joined by Council Tim Allen. Does any other have any other questions? I think I, and myself and Council Letterman have exhausted our questions. Tim, I know you're a little late to the table, but do you have any questions?
Tim, you're muted.
Tim, if you have any questions, you have to unmute. Okay.
But there we go.
All right.
I unmuted. Did that work?
Yes, sir.
All right. And I just wondered if we had discussed the Maple Street item?
We've discussed both of them. They had presentations for both.
All right, great. Then I, no, I don't, I was just going to listen in and I can catch up with you later, Melvin, on them.
Okay, the, there is a, Jesse has asked for a breakdown of the monetary parts or something to that. That's going to be sent out and I can update you. The only other thing was the language being, the REO language more than project matching the numbers that we typically use with REO work, being also written into it, the TIF.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to hold everybody up. I can catch up with you separately.
Okay.
If you're done.
Ladies.
Forward to that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from any of our guests?
I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, you know, first of all, I'd say thank you again to both teams for being with us, taking the time to present before the committee. And I would ask, you know, what's the anticipated timeline, both for delivery of this request to the full body and also timeline to completion on both projects?
I can speak to the the delivery of the agreements. We were shooting for the last meeting in June, but that may be a pretty quick turnaround for June 12th. So, it'll either be June 12th or it'll be the July meeting, Counselor. And in terms of schedule, I guess Chuck, do you want to speak for Davenport?
Call at one. He's smarter than me.
So, we're, from when we get the agreement with you and are able to transfer the property, we're assuming about three months for permitting and design. Three months for permitting and two months for design and then 12 months construction. So, about 17 months total for delivery from whatever the start date is.
Okay. And then Aaron, for the other project?
So, we are likely looking at three to four months for permitting and working with our friends at the ABCC. We're going through some of the discovery to understand exactly how much needs to be buttoned up in terms of the building. And I would say the jury is still out on exactly how long that'll take. It'll likely depend, we'll have some more clarity in the next four to six weeks as to how much rehab has to go into the building. We're doing some repointing work and that kind of stuff now. And as we dig, you know, a building that was erected in 1880, we find new and special things seemingly every day about the building. But I would say if we're, if we're up and at it by end of calendar year, we're in good shape and we'll be working our tails off to try to get it into the fall.
Great. Just very quickly, if, and this maybe is to Brian and of course the two developers as well. Just very quickly, if and this maybe it's to Brian and and of course, the two developers as well. If it comes in July meeting or even the June meeting, as you know, the operation of my council, our our council suggested they're good at sending things, tabling things. Will there be urgency of getting it done that same night?
Yes, absolutely.
So just just be conscious of that because for those of you who haven't had a lot of experience dealing with my council, they ask a lot of questions and if they're not clear on something, you know, the fact that there's the lack of, you know, we've got two, three counselors on this committee meeting. So we can go over all the stuff, then you've got nine others who don't know what the hell we just got through talking about. So just kind of as a warning.
Melvin, are there any outstanding concerns that we should be aware of right now that you think we'll have to address?
Well, not, you know, the the thing is, is I I'd expect, I don't know how consistent he will be, but I mean, we've got at least one colleague who sits consistently has voted against anything related to loan income or affordable housing. So I don't know if this would apply to his, you know, that part of it. And then other than that, I can know that the these numbers in terms of work and access by local getting contractors might trigger some concerns, castor nation by some people. Can't say for sure because I'd be speaking in for the operation of somebody else's mind, but I just like to be forewarned quite often when developers come, they come with a timeframe. They're coming to the council, they expect it to be done that night. And then wouldn't they come up against the wall of, well, I have more questions. I'd like to send it back to committee and then that costs you more money. So maybe just making sure that you've done your homework in terms of outreach to the colleague, my colleagues, you know, give them a chance to, you know, I I've been in meetings where did you told it a neighborhood council? Okay, and then neighborhood council may not exist, neighborhood council may not be meeting for the summer. All those types of things come up. So just giving be forewarned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the scheduling, you know, I would say, you know, the summer schedule only has one meeting in July, which is a regular meeting where this could be heard. And then the August meeting is a hearings meeting, so it wouldn't be heard in August. So I, you know, I will say it comes in July and and did not receive approval in July. It would be until September that it could get back onto the schedule. And so to that point, you know, I'll leave it up to the the departmental staff and and your teams about when you want to submit it for. But if it was submitted in June, even if it went to committee, it could come back in July. So keep that in mind. And I would just say, you know, you know, as far as outstanding issues, you know, the outstanding issue for me is just ensuring that those two policies of the council passed are clearly inked in the agreement and that the developers have a a firm understanding of both the requirements and the consequences of lack of compliance. So as long as that is is clearly laid out when this comes to us in its final form, you know, I just want to be abundantly clear now that that's that's what I'm looking at. Otherwise, as I mentioned, you know, I'm very supportive of both projects. And I think that, you know, they're in line with where we want to be headed. But we want to make sure that that full economic benefit is afforded on all ends.
That being said, is any other questions or comments? I have only one request. Could Brian, could you send me contact information to these two developers directly to me through my email, melvinspeaks@msn.com? I appreciate that.
Sure, be happy to. I think Anna Maria had a question.
Yes. Thank you. I know it may be unusual for us to ask questions, but sent us a draft of the TIF, which we're having our council review as well. There's been a processes, process that's been developed since last time you folks came to us, where our council also takes a look at the TIF to make sure it meets the statute. We plan on taking it because we have to approve it after you folks approve it to our September meeting. And so we just wanted to mention that. And I also wanted to mention that because this building's been abandoned for a long time, is that correct in my understanding? That this building, once the TIF is approved, would also be eligible for the ten percent abandoned building renovation deduction that is a state deduction. So I just wanted to put that out there and let you know that. And I also wanted to let one last mention, which is we've got a great chart that explains how TIFs work that I could, Brian, you probably have it, that it could probably go in the board materials to any member who may not understand how a TIF works. I think what's really good about the chart we have is it shows that the tax revenue that you're receiving today, the community will continue to receive. It's just the increment that there'll be a break on.
Thank you. And actually, I appreciate seeing that as well. Anything is anything that I can use to help support these projects moving forward gives me another tool in the box. So ladies, gentlemen, any other titles that I missed? Thank you very much for your time. There's no other questions or comments. I'd like to adjourn this meeting. And I, a council president, just a point of of order. As the establishment of the quorum between it being just me and you, is it inappropriate for us to entertain or for me to entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the committee of the whole or not?
I I think that, you know, my position on it, Counselor, would be there hasn't actually been anything filed. It's an informational discussion, so I'm not sure there's anything for us to actually refer back parliamentally to the to the full body. So I think that, you know, I think the meeting just stands as an informational meeting would be would be my inclination towards it. And then, you know, if there was something filed that then went to committee and then was referred back then, I think we could take it up at that time. But right now, I'm not sure we could, we don't have anything to refer on the table.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Ladies, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. Everybody have a great day and continue to invest in the city of Springfield. Thank you.